Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, Council, you received minutes from the June 22 meeting. Motion approved minutes from June 22.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
You also received the current expenses. Any questions? Motion to approve expenses.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Okay. I don't see Chris Wong. Chris was to be here this evening, so maybe she's going to come to the next meeting. So, visitor is Julie Weaver. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, thank you. This is kind of the Upco update. I didn't see it on the agenda, so I thought I would go ahead and get that in. First of all, don't forget the car show is coming up on August 29th, 11 to 5. You can preregister for the car show online at uptownplaincity.com. We also could use some volunteers, so if you're interested in that, you can get in contact us there or on our Facebook page as well. Now, what I really wanted to talk about, this has a deadline of the end of the month. I don't know if you saw in the paper or on Facebook that we are circulating a petition for wines by the glass in Plain City in Madison County. Right now, you can go to any of our establishments that normally would have wine, and they can't serve you wine because it's illegal. Nobody after prohibition had gone through this process to bring wines by the glass into Plain City. Union County is a different story. It's been, it's had that ability since prohibition was repealed. So, what we're doing is we're circulating a petition to get it on the ballot to ask the question, is it okay, basically, to sell wines by the glass in Plain City? And what this is going to do, why Upco is interested in doing it, is because there are three of the local establishments, the bowling alley, the pub, and Lee's Sports and Spirit, that pay for a D5 license, which is a whole license, but they're unable to sell wines, and they don't get any discount because they can't sell the wines. So, as soon as this goes through, they'll be able to sell some wine at those establishments. Also, there are some other establishments that would like to sell wine as well by the glass, and this will give them an option to go about it easier. They'll just have to worry about their own permit, not everything else that's going on. So, that's what that's for. I have petitions here. If you would like to sign one, I'll be around after the meeting. If you can't stay until after the meeting and would like to sign, again, our Facebook page or something, you can get ahold of us, and we'll find a way to get that taken care of.
How many do you think you're just going to need?
We need 163 in the west and 134 in the east, so over 300. And we're trying to go for 25 percent more, just in case. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to reports.
Yes.
Just want to let you know that we're still working. October comes hurdles to get a commercial property in the village, so just happy to report that at least it's still in the process. Also interacted with Cvidus Bank, which used to be Champagne, and they, I don't know if it was the hang-up between the change of banks or what, but they, I talked to their lawyer, and they are, were to contact David Brand in Madison County this past week about the light at West, and, because they were the last ones to settle out the right-of-way issues there, so hopefully that will be moving quickly. I doubt that a light will go in this year, just the construction season's too far along at this point, but I have also asked, we need a new person on planning and zoning. I talked to two or three people, and spoke with Robert Kavanaugh, who had put his name in to run for council position. He is willing to serve, so if I would like to appoint him, or if you would, I would like a motion of support for that.
Motion to appoint Mr. Kavanaugh. Second.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Thank you. I will swear him in at the next meeting, the next zoning meeting. All right.
The only report I have is, I handed out the month-end reports for June. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All the officers have completed Narcan training now, and Narcan will actually be issued to each officer now. Officer Greenbaum completed the Down Officer Civilian Rescue Training at Opa-ata. The Fourth of July Parade and fireworks went very well. Want to give thanks to Kevin Vaughn and Public Works, and also Chief Kidd in the Fire Department. They assisted us. We all work pretty well together. The sergeant hiring process has started in the Police Department. We have panel interviews this Wednesday, and just enough YIs. Twenty-five solicitor permits were issued for armed security, so next week is, they're probably going to flood the town, canvassing towns, so 25 permits is more than we usually give in like a year span, so, so there's going to be 25 of them here within a week.
Door-to-door.
Door-to-door.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm done.
Questions?
How bad was the water damage at the Police Department?
As of right now, the only thing that they're saying is that we need to spray for the bottom, the crawl space for mold. We're still, we're still talking about what next steps to take on that. They recommended a few things, but we're not going to go through with it, because I don't think it's necessary. I think the estimate was like $10,000.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Minister.
Yeah, handful of things this evening. As, in regards to the email that I had sent out with the sewer plant repairs, those repairs are in progress. A bunch of the steam threshers are in the park getting set up for their event this week and weekend. Like to congratulate Ryan Huff and his promotion to the Public Works Supervisor. As you know, Ryan's been with us for nine years, seven of which is full-time, two are part-time, and he's been a great asset in those nine years, and especially been my go-to guy in the last year that, that John hasn't really been here, so looking forward to working with Ryan in that capacity. On the employment front, I've made an offer of employment to someone for the PR Communications position. If everything comes back clean, she will be starting July 27. We have received all of our salt supply for this winter, so we're ready to go there. And also, you have resolution before you this evening for the OPWC grants. Randy Van Tilburg with Manik and Smith is here this evening and has been working on those and has them pretty much completed. We have a small little thing to deal with with those, but applications need to be the 24th of July for Union County and 27th of July for Madison County, so we'll be making those in the very near future. If you have any questions, myself or Randy are more than willing to walk you through those. And the last thing is, I will be out of town next week. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
No questions? Thank you. All right, President Proton.
Yep, thanks. I'd sent an email out to discuss the dates of our retreat. Not surprisingly, I did not get a consensus, and didn't hear back from some of you, but anyway, I would propose, well, we haven't talked whether we want to do it on a weekday, whether we want to do it on a weekend, who we want to involve, whether we're going to have Paul involved, I would assume we'll have Renee involved. I think she's critical, in my opinion, to that conversation. Sorry, Renee. So, I would propose August 20th. Much like Kevin, I'm going to be out starting the next couple of days, for a week and a half on vacation, and I get back to some things that I would have to do first weekend. August 20th would work for me. Hopefully, that's far enough out where we don't have plans, and we can schedule this. That is Thursday, Thursday, so my hope was that we could do this maybe from 5:30 or 6:00 until, you know, whenever 10, 11. And then, I don't suspect that that will, we will be able to discuss and wrap everything up within the time span, of course, but we can, again, get an idea of how long it's going to take going forward, how many more sessions we may need, if we'll need an arbitrator or a mediator or something along those lines. I think we can kind of hammer all those out, at least, but in the first, where I was going to roadmap of what to expect going forward. I think this is something we should probably try to have done as soon as possible, realistically, maybe the end of October or something along those lines, but. August 20th, 6 o'clock.
The only shot I have with that is school starts on the 8th, so usually there's open houses and stuff.
Okay.
Those next couple of days. They have three and three of their schools, so.
You may be busy. All right.
I sent you an email, said, okay, July and August.
You did.
Almost said, but not the 20th. $10,000.
I was going to say, the 13th or the 18th.
13th is fine. 13, that's a Thursday as well.
And what's the earliest everyone could meet? When you get into 9:00s, 10:00s, 11:00 o'clock, peak war, I've had a whole day tonight. You have to fog down a lot at that time frame.
I can meet at 5:00. Perhaps we could order a pizza.
I'll get it 5:00.
All right, 5:00 on the 13th of August.
Can we go do it here?
I assumed as much, unless anyone knows of any problem with that. Isn't that good for you?
Are we going to have a pre-agenda for that, or how are we going to navigate?
I didn't anticipate that. Obviously, if you, if we want to email and kind of get ideas, I was just going to use that particular session to figure out what we need, what, how we're going to do this, kind of do a roadmap for what I assume is going to be one or two more poll meetings and kind of figure out what our priorities are, how we want to spend or allocate our resources.
Do we just go to the planning story that night?
Yeah, that was my idea. If someone else wants to be more structured than that, I'm all here. If you have thoughts about that, just send it out in an email. I guess we can talk about that afterward. Nothing else? Was there, was there a desire to have department heads there, or who all did you want there? Good question. I think we need Renee. I don't know that we need Paul. Again, this is just my opinion there. If I others jump in. I think we need Kevin. And I think we need the mayor. No offense, Paul.
Probably down to.
What's that?
Probably down to.
Send down. There we go. All right.
Yeah, Dale's part in the pizza.
Anyone else disagree with that? How's the 13th work for you? Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Too out of your choice.
I don't have anything else.
Thank you. All right.
Met with Darren Lee and Shannon Pine last, last Thursday to work some more on the Property Maintenance Code, and we spent considerable amount of time kind of putting final touches on it. I've got to put the final draft together for this week's meeting. We'll circulate it probably tomorrow morning and get it around to everybody. But we're making progress on that to having kind of a final rough draft and then having another public hearing on it. I'll look at it, obviously, you committed an officer comments. As soon as I get it to PMC, then we go through it for the final time on Wednesday night, whatever that final draft kind of comes up, then we'll circulate that and make it available to the public, so if anybody has any comments, they can prompt their comments at the next meeting. Otherwise, just, I'm going to start working with Kevin on the OPWC grant, what kind of matters and things like that.
Okay. Paul has also provided the draft of a social media document. I have not had a chance to read it yet, but I will be doing that and getting something out to you guys, so. All right, thank you. We meet this one second. BCA.
We have no need to meet.
Kevin, do you have anything on CIC?
Yes, CIC, Madison County met, and it's not approved yet, but I can share that our membership rates, which I think were $500 this year, are probably going to be increasing to the tune of about $2,043 for next year. Again, that hasn't been approved by the board, and that'll probably be done at next meeting, but I don't anticipate that having any roadblocks at this point. And I have nothing for Union County CIC.
What do we currently pay for a meeting? We are paying Union County. But they, there's around at 3,000. And that is all-inclusive chamber, CIC. Yeah. Economic. All right. Park.
Yeah, the Park Committee met, I believe, two weeks ago. This was our second meeting. We kind of, if you recall, we put our master plan on hold to discuss the uniformity of the park fees and how to handle everything going forward. This was our second meeting on that particular topic. This meeting started out with working draft of what we'd like to see. We had several outside agencies or organizations there to take their input as well. We've made several changes to the, to what I think we'd like to see. We need to schedule a third meeting on that topic to kind of hammer out and have a final draft to, to present, but I think after our next meeting, we will have something, I think it's going to say something that we call final.
Did you get the copies of the deeds, both deeds? Park deeds?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Great, thank you. Personnel findings?
We met on the 8th, and Renee went over the current budget, and that, obviously, one of the big concerns is the pools are in less than projected. They've had some issues out there, and of course, the weather hasn't helped, so we discussed that for a while. Chief McKee and Mr. Vaughn are both working on their individual budgets, and hopefully they will have them ready for the next Personnel and Finance meeting about the end of August. The goal is to have the temporary 2016 budget ready for council vote around the end of September. There was a discussion about the zoning officer, whether it needs to be full or part-time, and what pay scale. Mrs. Tuller was hired on a contractual basis for 90 days. That 90 days is up, so I guess that's maybe something we should discuss.
Yes. Renee and I talked about that today. She was going to get Paul to judge.
I didn't talk to her. She was out of the office for my call, so.
So, we're just trying to get to some of the answers around the contractual agreement. So.
Okay. And we discussed very lightly. Don't boo me. The possibility of having a tax levy on the ballot in May of 2016. Renee was going to put numbers together on income versus property taxes. This is kind of on the suggestion of Rock Mill, that we have very low taxes here in the village. We are getting by, but very slim. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit, see how we, how we go from there. And then, Mr. Vaughn presented a personnel issue that we probably need to be discussing in executive session tonight.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
About your.
Fire.
Fire fire.
Well, last, last month, they had 44 fire runs, and they helped Murray go out a little bit, and then Murray's going to come back and help us out. They had 75 EMS runs, and a lot of those runs was false. People can't get up. They spent $1,460, one cent for a fuel, and the maintenance repairs at the place was And one of the big issues they got now is get, hire a new farmer. They would need some part-time, and he's not like Kevin. He puts it out there, but nobody applies. So, if anybody, the farmer would like a job, call March. That's probably what they got.
All right, thank you. And, you know, Chief mentioned the Fourth of July, and we just wanted to bring that up and thank all the work, all of our departments and all the work that went into that. I know it was involved, and we were short-staffed, and we had a lot of volunteers that helped, and it went well, so, and certainly appreciate the fireworks committee and all part of that getting to it. All right, all business. The second reading of Resolution 1615, property dispersment for Jim Hill.
Motion approved.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, we do have a couple of pieces of legislation. Two of the ABC registrations. Okay. The first one is a resolution authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program for the Congress Avenue, Shepherd Avenue Waterline Replacement Project to execute contract as required in declaring an emergency. This is Resolution 1715.
Why are we doing this as an emergency?
Because of the dead warrants.
The applications are due next week, so there's not enough.
We didn't even submit, we didn't release the application until July.
It always looks like that, that those were the state.
Okay.
So, Resolution 1715, need to waive.
We need a motion to do it as an emergency. Is that all we're trying?
Yes.
Motion to waive three readings on 1715.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
No motion to.
So, motion to pass 1715. Pass emergency. As an emergency.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
1815.
Then we have the other one, which is a resolution authorizing the village administrator to prepare, submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and/or like Local Transportation Improvement Program for the Maple Street and Gay Street Waterline Replacement and declaring emergency. Resolution 1815.
Motion to waive three readings of 1815.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Motion passed 1815 as an emergency.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
That's what I said. 1915.
I have the most current. Resolution for amendment to final appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through December 31 and declaring an emergency. And are you all understanding what this is?
What's the pool reserve fund, is that what?
You mean up there in the pool fund?
Oh.
Yeah.
And we're transferring the $1,600 for the fireworks. That covers the rest of the contract. When we discuss that, I'm sorry.
That's the money that the fireworks committee donated to the village.
Okay, so that works.
Yeah, so I just have to reappropriate that money so I can spend it.
Okay, I got you.
Any other questions? Resolution 1915.
Motion to pass. Go for it.
Motion to pass Resolution 1915.
We need to waive, sorry. Motion to waive.
Motion to waive 1915. Three ratings of 1915.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Motion to pass Resolution 1915 as an emergency.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is conference of plan, and I'm assuming that will be part of the discussion at retreat.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay. And then, solicitation of circulars, did you?
I know this was my issue. I don't, haven't really heard from anyone else here, whether this is something that y'all care about. I know I've received feedback from several members of village, but I haven't heard from anyone here whether this is something you want to spend our time on. If not, then I guess we can move on. If so, what I would ask is, I want to do a little research on my own and perhaps discuss this 30 days from now or a month from now. But it is something I'm still interested in doing. Anyone else have any thoughts on it?
I will say, the discussion earlier this year is cost of improvements and the way it's being distributed lately. So, there's been some instruction, instructive action as a result of our discussion.
I don't know if this is on the same lines, but I've also noticed several businesses putting up those signs that we all put up when we run for council, so to speak. You know, those signs are just kind of on the road, random spots at the end of the neighborhoods. I don't know if those are currently prohibited by our code or not. I don't know if we all want to do anything about that. I do know that several, or many municipalities, you know, other cities do prohibit those kinds of things. I don't think they have any interest in that as well. Mayor. Those, they are, it is code, and I know Annabelle's been aggressively removing those at every opportunity, and.
It's anyone that is not in town, they don't have a right to do that, and so she removes those, and she goes out and marches around to get removed.
Oh, okay.
If it's in-town entities, there's a limit of how long they can get.
Oh, okay. Does it discuss where they can be put up or anything? No. If you have like your sandwich board signs and things like that, and signage for your property, it's separate and apart from these temporary signs, and it's a time where you can put them up, and I don't believe that's.
I think it's just right.
As long as it's not a same town issue, I think that's all right. All right, so, assuming I'm not hearing anything from anyone, if anyone wants to just email me your thoughts, that's fine. And then, I, we can discuss it two meetings from now, that'd be great. I'm not going to have much time before the next meeting. I'll just be getting back communications, so.
So, you're wanting circulars back on the agenda, then, too?
Yeah, we're just going to. That'd be the first meeting in August, the 10th.
Okay. Looking at the agenda. Anything, anything quick? Motion to adjourn? Oh, you want it in executive session. What do you know? Oh, bear with me, I'm sorry.
It'd be compensation with the.
Okay, compensation. I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss compensation of our public employees.